All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a public hearing meeting of the San Benito C I S D Board of Trustees. Today is January 4th, 2022, and the time is 5:36. I call this meeting to order. Roll call. Ms. Janie Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano. Mr. Rudy Corora. Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez. Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Weller. And Ramiro Moreno, I'm here. We do have a quorum. There's four board members. So with that said, next up on the agenda is item 1.3, Public Comment. Ms. Peggy? None? Okay, so we move on to item 1.4, Discussion and Presentation of San Benito C I S D Rating on the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Next, Ms. Perez, you can present on this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So.
Good evening.
This is going to be the first hearing. The first, first public hearing for some of you. So I'm going to go over some of the requirements, some of the indicators, how they're, how they're worded, what they're trying to mean, what kind of points we can get, and how we scored on them as well. I'll go over the main requirements. And, okay, there you go. So one of the requirements is that we do have to advertise in the newspaper 10 to 30 days before the actual public hearing. So we originally had it for December. So that one was advertised on December 2nd and 3rd in the Valley Morning Star and San Benito News. When we rescheduled it, I apologize, the clicker's not working very well. When we rescheduled it, it went to Janu- December 17th in the Valley Morning Star as well as the San Benito News. Some of the other requirements based on the first rating requirements is that we have to advertise the superintendent's current employment contract. If we do not want to advertise, I mean, have that available on the website, we would present it to you here today. However, his contract is available online and it does have to be there continuously for 12 months. So that's, that's going to be available online at the link there mentioned. And then the other link is our first report, which is also available online. What is not available online as of right now is the total amounts. That will be updated after this meeting. So I like to make sure that y'all see these numbers before anybody else does. So as part of the requirements, we do have to disclose any gifts, travel requests, reimbursements on meals, lodging, transportation, motor fuel registration, as well as any compensation and transactions between the board members and the business. So I'm going to go over the reimbursements. And please keep in mind that this is for the period ending in June 30th, 2022, 2020, excuse me. So this is for the 1920 school year. So for Dr. Nate Carmen, $20,462.91. Mr. Vargas, $5,638.15. Mr. Mendez, $2,414.70. Ms. Garcia, $4,172.55. Mr. Lopez, $1,876.66. Mr. Rosas, $2,903.09. Ms. Weaver, $6,732.99. Ms. Silva, $5,193.98. And Mr. Olivares, $924.2. So these amounts are significantly lower than what we usually see. 1920 was also the year of COVID, so a lot of these registration fees are going to be virtuals. And we're not going to see a lot of mileage or hotel or any of the meals because, again, they were all virtual. So does anybody have any questions about those for right now? If not, I'm going to move on to the next section, which is outside compensation and fees received by the superintendent for professional consulting and other personal services. So Dr. Nate Carmen has $0.00 received. Gifts received by executive officers and board members and first degree relatives. And these are gifts at the value of $250 or more. So Dr. Nate Carmen, Michael Vargas, Angel Mendez, M.L. Garcia, Orlando Lopez, Victor Rosa, Sonia Weaver, Janie Silva, and Baldemar Olivares Jr. all had zero. As well as $0 on business transactions between the school district and board members. This will be up on our website this evening. So if anybody has any questions, you are more than welcome to ask. If not, I will move on to the next section. And that is the actual first rating. So the passing score is 70. Excuse me. Our district score was 80. So I'll go over these indicators. Indicator one. Was the complete annual financial report and data submitted to T E A within 30 days of November 27th or 28th deadline? And the answer was yes. Number two, was there an unmodified opinion, unmodified meaning that it was free of any instances, on the A F R in the financial statement as a whole? Unmodified opinion was a yes. Number three.
Can I ask a question on that real quick?
Yes.
When they say, was there an unmodified opinion in the A F R, the A F R is?
Annual financial report.
Okay, so on the annual financial report, that is the, the report that we were provided by Costcos and Associates. Is that correct?
Correct.
At the end of the 2021?
Yes.
So I do remember, and this is off the top of my head, I don't have the, the information in front of me. But those items that were listed, I know that, I don't want to call them insignificant because they are significant, but there, there's a three different levels of, of, you know, things that were brought up to our attention as a district.
Correct.
Right? So these, what this question asked, number two, was there an unmodified opinion? That, that is not what is referred to as what the, let's call them dings that we got.
Material weaknesses is what they're called?
There you go.
Yes, that is completely different from an unmodified opinion.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
A reason we would get an unmodified opinion is if we had a very significant deficiency on any of them. If there was a lack of internal controls, if there was any kind of indication of theft or fraud of any kind.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Was the school district in compliance with payment terms of all debt agreements? That means all of our debt payments, were they done on time? And those are done in February and August? And that was a yes? Number four, did the school district make timely payments to T R S, Texas Workforce Commission, I R S, and government agencies? Yes, we did. So that means that we would, that's a yes or no. That's what the ceiling passed means. Now, on any of these, 1 through 4, if we had a no on any of these, we would automatically fail our first report. So we did well on those first four. Number five is not an indicator for this year. And so you know, they change the indicators almost every year. So we might have a five next year, we might not. Some of these might change. If you go back and look throughout the years, they are all over the place on what it, what it means to, to meet certain ratios. Number six, was the average change in fund balance over three years less than 25%? That one was yes, so we had, we met the ceiling. Number seven, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures? That one out of 10, we got four points, and I will go over any of the ones that we do have a deficiency on. Number eight, was the measure of current?
So, once again, I'd like to interject if I may, please. Sorry about that, Ms. Perez. So under number seven, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund, is that relative to how much we're supposed to have? Or what, what they're recommending to have in the fund balance as far as, for operating the district? Is, is that what it's referring to?
Yes, this one, it does have a calculation, if you notice on the PowerPoint. It has an either/or, so we can either meet the 90 days or have a certain amount of revenues over expenditures. So I'll go over those in a little bit.
Okay.
Ms. Perez, just to be clear, you said this is for the year 2019, 2020?
Correct.
So what month does it start in 2019? And what month does it end?
July 2019 through June 2020.
Ms. Perez, you said you were going to go over anything that had a deficiency in?
Correct.
So anything under the number?
It's actually number seven, number nine, number 11 and 12. So I'll give you the calculations on those after we're done going over, unless you want to go over them.
No, that's fine. We're going to go through everything and then go back to these, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Number eight. Was the measure of current assets to current liability ratio for the school district sufficient to cover long, short-term debt? That was 10 out of 10. Number nine, did the school district general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? We had 0 out of 10. Number 10. Did the school district average less than a 10% variance when comparing budget revenues to actual revenues over the last three fiscal years? We had 10 out of 10 points. Number 11, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? If the school district's increase of students in membership over five years was 7% or more, then the school district automatically passes this indicator. We got 8 out of 10. Number 12, was the debt per $100 of assessed property values ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? 8 out of 10. Number 13, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal or less than the threshold ratio? We got 10 out of 10. Number 14, did the school district not have a 15% decline in the students-to-staff ratio over three years? We got 10 out of 10. Number fifteenth, 16, I'm sorry, 15. Was the school's A D A within the allotted range of the district's biennial pupil projections submitted to T E A? If the district did not submit pupil projections to the E A, which we do, did it certify T E A projections? We got 5 out of 5 points. Did the comparison of Public Education Information Management System, P E M's data, to like information in the school district's annual financial report result in a total variance of less than 3% of all expenditures by function? We did not exceed any expenditures by function, so that ceiling passed. It does not have a numerical value to it. Did the external independent auditor report that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, or federal funds? We did not have any material weaknesses. We were free of any instances, so that ceiling passed. Number 18, did the external independent auditor indicate that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? We got 10 out of 10. Did the school district post the required financial information on its website in accordance with government code, local government code, and Texas Education Code, Texas Administrative Code, and other statutes? We got 5 out of 5 on that one. And then the last one is, did the school board members discuss the district's property values at a board meeting within 120 days before the district adopts its budget? And that ceiling passed as well. So we got, out of 100, we got 80 points. So let's go over indicator number seven. So indicator number seven, we got 4 out of 10 points. This is asking if we had 90 days, because that is what this report is asking for. If we had 90 days of cash on hand. So we had 59.36. So we were short by half a day of two months' worth of, of cash on hand. So I did the calculations on that. We would have had to have an additional 10.5 millions in revenues. That's, that indicator is not usually, we don't usually meet that one. That's, San Benito, just in general, does not always get to meet that one. That one was a little bit lower than usual because of COVID. Because we did have our, our fund balance hit on that one year.
Ms. Perez, when you say that San Benito doesn't usually meet that criteria, why so? What, what is, what is, you know, I mean, this is, it's, it's a question, just what, what are the obstacles in our way of, of meeting that, that?
We, I want to say it was six years ago, seven years ago, when we had our fund balance at 4 million. That, that was where it started. So we had one year that we did have those 90 days, and it was great, but it also helped cushion what happened that year with CARES Act. So it's just a matter of making sure that we're working collaboratively to build up that fund balance. So we've been doing really well this last year because of ESTER III, we were able to get well more than three months. So that indicator will show up to be in a much better light in the next report.
But that would be towards the 2020, 2021 school year?
Correct. Next year around this time, most likely in December.
Fiscal year ending 21.
Correct. These are always one year behind.
If I recall correctly, you said that these indicators change every year, though?
They do.
But that's something that stays every year or not?
This one might change. I haven't looked at next year's, but I do know that we're anticipating that some of these indicators are going to change because of all of the COVID issues that we've had. I mean, these, these issues are not just here, like, these are statewide. So we'll talk about that as well, just so you can see, I did get an idea of where everybody else is in our region. But there's, they're noticing, T E A is noticing that there are certain things that's happening because of ESTER, because of COVID, because of A D A, because of not having the ability to predict what months are going to be spikes and how that's going to affect our student A D A and how it's going to affect our revenue. I mean, we didn't anticipate having a decreased revenue on our taxes. I would never have thought of that because of COVID, but last year we had a million dollars decreased in our revenues because of that. Like, those are just, they're not things that T E A would normally think is going to actually happen. So after those things happen, then they start modifying what ratios need to be changed. So it depends on what T E A wants to do. Any other questions on indicator seven?
So you mentioned that with the additional funds that we're getting right now with CARES and so forth, that that's going to help out our cash on hand. However, is there a plan without that? Because let's say we don't get more funds. Is there going to be a plan that you all have in the school district to make sure that we do meet those requirements?
The requirements might not even be there at that time. The, these numbers are reflective of 1920, and those ESTER funds are all the way in through 2023, 24. So for the next five years, we're going to be looking at some kind of fluctuation on. We don't know what T E A is going to do on these ratios. So we have to just make do with what we can at the time. I mean, it's very unfortunate, but I also want to be realistic and give you a heads up on what it's going to look like. I mean, we're not always going to be able to meet administrative cost ratio. I'm surprised we did this year. That was really good, actually. We got 10 out of 10. But because we have those federal funds, it decreases our local, it skews ratios. I mean, if, if we get one great thing, it's going to negatively affect us somewhere. It always will. It's, it's a balancing game. But we do get these numbers early on in the year, and we do try to, to anticipate what our numbers are going to look like. We can run preliminary numbers months before this is done. And we can show y'all so that you aren't, like, surprised by any of it. So that's something that we can work on. But as far as fixing it, if the account coding is correct, then there's, I would not want to change numbers just to make a, a report pass. I mean, if the numbers are clean, then we should leave them like that. Okay, I'm going to go on to indicator nine. All right. Indicator nine is, did the district?
Ms. Perez?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're saying that if the numbers are clean, then there shouldn't be any necessary changes to be done. But when it comes to school districts, in order for us to have a healthy balance, we want to make sure that we're not overspending on unnecessary expenditures also. So I think that as a district, that's going to be important as well for y'all to make sure that you're maintaining the, the proper balances so that we don't end up short. Because if there is an emergency one day, we're going to need to fall back on those three months' worth of, of funds, you know? And so we can't say, well, it is what it is. We need to make sure that we are prepared in case we do have an emergency. So having the proper fund balance is important.
I agree. However, this, this report is not indicating that we're overspending. So this, like, the fund balance, I mean, there's no way we could have gone around that. Like, we overspent because that's what we budgeted. And then when they gave us CARES Act, they said, okay, here's your $4.7 million, but we're going to take it away from your state funding. And by the way, you didn't get those 1,000 students, so we need that money too. That's not something we could have anticipated. I, I cannot even imagine how we could have anticipated that. That happened when they gave us the 4.7 and they took it back from us. They told us, here's your 4.7, you can only use it on COVID-related items. But we're taking all of this 4.7 that you could use anywhere you want, but we're taking it away from you. So it happened in June. We closed our books in June. There is no way we could have anticipated that one. I remember we planned for that as additional funds. So when they told us 4.7 million, we were like, great. And then they took it right back from us. So that really was not something we could have anticipated. I would love to have been able to, but it, it was not something. And I don't take it lightly. I don't.
As you mentioned, something I want to allude to and just reiterate what you said, when we're looking into the future and we're looking into the end of, or, or the end of fiscal year 2021, figures are going to look better because of those funds that we received.
Right.
And because we were able to supply and, and, and save money and replenish monies. So, so in my eyes, hopefully, these, these are, our first rating will come up next year because of the fact that we received these ESTER funds.
I'm confident they will, actually. This was an anomaly year. It was not something that we anticipated. And I'm not the only one that was not happy with it. You should have seen our finance councils. We were disgusted with how they, they gave us and then took it back. It was... What's that? Yeah. So on number nine, on indicator number nine, that is very much the same thing as indicator seven. The question is, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? If not, was the school district's number of days of cash on hand greater or equal to 60 days? So the first part, yes. Our expenses did exceed revenues. And then the second part, we did not meet the 60 days. We were at 59.3986. So that one is a yes or no question. So you got 0 or you got 10 points? We've already fixed that one, so I don't anticipate that this one will come back again. And I don't, in looking at the audits, I don't ever believe we've ever had a year in which we, since I've been here, that we've spent more than what we've gotten. So our, this was the very first time that we've had revenues not exceed our expenditures. So this is not something that we would plan for. I mean, that is definitely something that we make sure that is maintained, that our revenues exceed our expenditures. So the next one is indicator 11. And I don't believe I have that on the PowerPoint. I apologize. On indicator 11, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? If the school district's increase of students in membership over five years was 7%, then the school district automatically passes this indicator. So we did not increase in 2020 from 2026, 2020, 2016, I'm sorry, excuse me. We had 10,885, and in 2020, we had 10,244. So that was a decrease. And then the amount that we were looking for was .60 to receive a 10 points. And our number was .6524. So this one, if we had an increase in our A D A, obviously that would have made it better. Again, COVID had other plans on that one. So our long-term liabilities was 108 million. Our total assets was 165 million, and that was a ratio less than 1. So that would have, that would have given us more if they, like, it would have been a much bigger, lower score, excuse me, if we had gone by that one. But that one, we did get 8 out of 10 points. And then on test number 12, indicator number 12, was the debt per $100 of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? So our points were 8 out of 10. So they take the local funds and revenues that we got from our taxes, divided by our liabilities, and then they include our property values. Our mathematical breakdown was 4.5613. We had to get no more than a 4. So this was also the year that we did not get $1 million in property taxes. If we had gotten that, it would have put us at the 4. So that one is not something that we could have, I can't force everybody to come in. So that was 8 out of 10 points. And I'm going to show you one more slide. This is the first ratings for all of Region 1. So I bring this up because when first ratings came out, I emailed Dr. Carmen right away and I told him, look, and I was not happy. And he had told me that he had just finished talking to some other fellow superintendents. And he said, so-and-so went down, so-and-so went down, this one was unaffected. But most of the people who were in that discussion with him had negatively been impacted by that. I know personally of at least three schools that appealed to T E A because they did not feel it was fair either. And all of the appeals were denied.
Once again, just for clarification, you're, you're referring to the appeals that were made at the end of fiscal year 2019, correct?
So whenever, at the end of, at the end of 2020, whenever the audits are complete, we turn them into the auditors, I'm sorry, to T E A. And T E A gets those ratios, plugs in all the numbers, and then they'll say, here you go, here is your preliminary rating. They give us that number in October. In October, we have the opportunity to appeal the ratios. Because even though our audit is great, the ratios are a totally different story. And every school district has the opportunity to appeal those ratios. So I know several of them that did appeal it because whether their tax payment was not recorded correctly or it was not recognized in the right year or A D A. And we talked about hold harmless A D A, why wasn't that included? There was a bunch of different things that we, we just weren't happy about. And including the CARES Act money. I think that that should have been a hold harmless number as well. But T E A did not even approve anybody's appeal. So last year, we had 12 schools, and this is just the Region 1 area. 12 schools had 100s. This year, we only had 5. And of the 39 schools in Region 1, 18 of them declined. That is very unheard of. When we meet at our finance council meetings, we talk about these things. That was a very sombering moment because we all felt like failures. And we even had T E A in that meeting telling us, hey, look, this is what we're doing, this is what we're trying. And everybody had some kind of plea. But this is just one of the other unfortunate effects of what COVID has done. It, it doesn't necessarily mean that we are not doing our due diligence. It just means that those ratios did not jive with what actually happened in the school districts. I mean, it's, it just doesn't, it doesn't jive. So.
And thank you for clarifying. The reason I mentioned fiscal year 2019 was because, now that, now I recall why I, because at the end of that year, the fiscal year 2019 as well, although that's not being discussed right now, we also appealed, we, like you said, every October, we get our figures. We're able to appeal. And we were appealing some other issues having to do with the bond debt, if I recall correctly, correct? Okay, so this year was a different appeal, but we still knocked down, correct?
Everybody's.
Everybody was, got it, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, colleagues, board members, any questions? No questions, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Perez. So if there are no further questions, I guess we need a motion to adjourn? To adjourn, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, motion by Janie Lopez, I have a second. Mario, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 4-0, meaning adjourned at 6:07.